All right, we're just a couple of minutes away from starting. We're actually a couple of minutes late, and I apologize for being late getting down. I'd like to invite, before we begin, I'd like to invite everybody to stand and join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Before we pray, we're missing one of our council members, Mike Overton. He lost his wife Judy late last week, and we certainly want to remember them in prayer as they prepare for their services for Judy. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet, we thank you, Lord, for your blessings on our community, we thank you for the city we live in and for the people that we serve. God, we just ask, ask especially right now, that you comfort Mike and all the family as they go through this time of mourning and grief. God, we do ask that for tonight, that you give us clarity and wisdom as we make decisions to best impact the people we represent, and we trust you for these things now in Jesus' name, amen. All right, I'd like to welcome you again to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. We do have large print agendas available. Bill's got them right there, if that would be helpful to anyone. All that said, I will call the meeting to order, and we'll ask our city clerk Denise Pierce to call the roll.
Mayor Strauss?
Here.
Rick Culver, Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Toby Fulfer?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Kathy J. Cox?
Here.
Ernest C.
All right, thank you. Item four, word item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If there, if we have residents in the room that would like to address the council concerning something that is not on tonight's agenda, we ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief. Is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight concerning something that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll move.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for options A and B. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and next, Patsy Christie, Planning Director, will bring our planning commission report and recommendations. Patsy?
The first item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Charlie Adams in connection with 1605 Steel Avenue, a single-family dwelling. Planning Commission reviewed this request for a waiver of the sidewalk requirements and recommends denial of the request. And I did read the title of the resolution.
I'm going to move this resolution forward with option two.
Option two?
That's the denial of the waiver request.
Denial of the waiver of street?
Yeah.
That's the denial, okay.
Yep.
You have a motion for?
Yes. That was my motion with option two.
Option two, yes.
Should we take comments first?
Can, if you, since we don't have a second, we'll go ahead and open it up for comments. Patsy, you want to give us any background before we invite, I'm sure probably the applicants here, so?
Well, this is a residential neighborhood. The property was recently rezoned to MF2 to allow duplex to go on that location. There aren't any sidewalks in that location. It just seems like an area that we need to start. It's close to an elementary school. Planning Commission just recommends denial. We offered to make payment in lieu of improvements, and the applicant asked us to move it forward just a waiver request, and that's why the recommendation for denial is coming forward.
What was the vote?
Um...
I was here, but I don't remember what the...
I don't think there was anyone opposed to it, but I don't have the vote with me. I'm sorry, I didn't bring the file with me.
You don't think there was anyone?
I don't think there was anyone who was voting for?
For the waiver.
Right.
Right, okay.
Doug, I thought that, because I remember being here, and I thought there was quite a bit of conversation about bill of assurance.
Bill of assurance or payments in lieu of?
Yes, and there was...
And the applicant chose not to.
He chose to move forward.
He wanted the waiver to be, right. He wanted the waiver to be discussed. Planning Commission is moving it forward with a recommendation for denial of the waiver. That still gives you the option to discuss either one of those, if that's what you want to do.
Well, while we're waiting, while the, yeah, if y'all'd like to go ahead and address the council, that'd be great.
Patsy, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
The reason why this is before us is because it was rezoned to allow for a duplex?
It was rezoned to allow for a duplex. They do not want to have to put the sidewalk in as part of that.
Is it building a duplex, or what?
It's actually building a duplex, but the density is the same as if it were a single-family. It's still four units per acre. We just rezoned it a month or so ago, yeah.
Okay, and refresh my memory, Steel turns off of West End Street?
Yes, it's just north of Almond School.
Yeah.
And that subdivision just to the, to the south of it has sidewalks in it. It's an older subdivision, lot of single-family homes in that, but it was built back when there wasn't sidewalk, wasn't a requirement.
Was this just a vacant lot, or was there a house torn down, or do you?
You'll have to answer that.
The house burned down a short years ago.
Yeah, okay. That part I didn't remember.
My name is Charlie Adams, 3885 Julio Road. Here's some pictures of the site plan. The bill of assurance never came up, from my understanding. I'd be willing to do a bill of assurance, but I just didn't want to do payment in lieu of, because this subdivision is 63 years old, there's no curb and guttering in it, there's no plans that I know of of doing any of that, and so I don't feel like there's, probably in the next 10 or 15 years, there's going to be curb and guttering there. The sidewalk, if we build it, has to be six inches above the street level, which is going to be putting it really high. There's going to be an 18-inch covert ditch going to be in front of it. I don't think the sidewalk's ever going to get used because of that. And as you see those pictures there, there's no, there's even, there's a lot of them that don't even have hard-service driveways down through there. I just think it's kind of a waste of money to put into a sidewalk there at this time. I'm not against sidewalks. The last duplex I did, I did a sidewalk, and there was none even on that side of the street, but I do, you know, think sidewalks are good, but it's going to be a safety hazard on this one. When you get to the end of it, there's a drainage ditch. You're going to drop right off in that drainage ditch. I just don't feel like it's going to be useful. I'd rather put our money somewhere where it's useful than just putting a block of concrete out there.
And I wouldn't disagree with you. I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe is another one that we, that was discussed that night at plant, I was there, but, but I thought that yours was part of the discussion for a bill of assurance.
I have not spoken about...
So it might have been one of the others that was heard that night.
I've never done, I would be willing to do a bill of assurance. If they ever do something out there, I'd be willing to pay my part to get the sidewalk in, but I'd like something that's going to be useful and not something that's just going to be a block of concrete in the way.
That makes really good sense. So could I amend my motion?
Sure.
For option, if you're willing? Option four?
Second that.
Or for how long?
You can put a time limit on it, too, or?
Yeah.
Because this allows you to set how many years you want that bill of assurance.
Well, we've done anywhere from two to five. What is the council, what are the council, do you have a wish? Five years? For the bill of assurance?
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for a five-year bill of assurance.
I drove by the property today, and, I mean, there's, it would be decades before we saw sidewalks through there. Unless they change the footprint on these other houses, they're not going to have to put that in, are they?
That's correct. I could argue that, though, we could do a secondary school program and put sidewalks down one side of those streets. There's always possibilities to open up neighborhoods for sidewalks. We just haven't done any of them in this neighborhood yet.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is a similar request for a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Brittenham Construction Company, connection with 3325 Butterfly Avenue. Here, it's a single-family dwelling. It's a corner lot. They're building a sidewalk on the north side. They're requesting a waiver of the sidewalk on the west side of the lot, which comes down, I think that's Butterfield Coach, right? I can't read it from here. Okay, I don't have, my eyesight's not good enough for that right now. Planning Commission recommends denial of this request. Again, discussion was had, bill of assurance, payment in lieu of, and the applicant asked that it be taken forward with just a waiver. Planning Commission recommended denial of that, too.
So the request is to not do the west side along Butterfield Coach?
Right.
But to do the north?
Right.
Side along, what is that road, Butterfly, or?
Butterfly Avenue, yes.
Yeah, okay.
One of the concerns was if you look down this lot, you go to that subdivision to the west, there could be a tie across that to tie those two subdivisions together if the sidewalk went all the way down there. There again, I think there's some construction issues. Payment in lieu of was discussed, and that wasn't an option that the developer wanted, so.
Okay.
There's no other sidewalk along Butterfield Coach there, though, anywhere, is there?
No.
Well, if you look across the street at lot 3275, it looks like it has a sidewalk.
Yeah, they did it.
They did it, yeah. It's just so happens that property on the corner wasn't included in that other subdivision on the north side, so there's not one on that side. I'm sorry?
Sidewalks or street improvements, too?
This one is just sidewalks, because a single-family home, you're only required to do the sidewalks, not the street improvements, yeah.
I don't know, subdivision, is that a subdivision?
That's part of a subdivision. When this was originally platted, there was more subdivision that was supposed to go with it, and we would have picked up the rest of the street improvements with the next phase. It's one of those that didn't continue, but is now being filled in, so.
So there's also the possibility that this property to the south could someday be improved, and?
Yeah.
They might be required to build sidewalk, correct?
That's true, yes.
And that one, there's a lot more likelihood of that happening than the one we just talked about, it seems like.
The applicant here, would the applicant consider, I don't know the applicant, consider a bill of assurance?
I don't see, is there anybody here that's representing this one on Butterfly Avenue?
To me, this is just me thinking out loud here, but, but a bill of assurance would make more sense to me, because until the road improvements are done, the sidewalk, whatever you do, may be a waste.
Or payment in lieu of, so that when and if the...
Yeah, or payment in lieu of, yeah.
Right, when the improvements are done, we would have that amount of money to put in to do the improvements across this.
I think either of those would be good.
Either one of those, but that was not an option, and I can't, it wasn't an option they wanted to discuss the other night, and if there's not anyone here, I can't tell you which way they would want to go.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on this, same as before, and make it with option four, and give it five years.
Okay, so that'd be a five-year bill of assurance.
But we don't even know if you're agreeable to do that, though.
No, we're going to, we're going to get them up here if they...
But we're here to do this.
Well, we're going to tell them they either have to build the sidewalk themselves, or you approve the option of a bill of assurance for five years. Those are the two options. If they don't want either one of those, they'll have to come back.
But what if we didn't take any action tonight?
If you take no action, then they have to build the sidewalk.
And they're not here, so why don't we just not take any action? No one's here to ask us.
Is there no one here for this?
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
I presume notice was given.
They're always encouraged to be at the meeting, yes.
Well, I think that's right.
At the meeting and in the written response that they get, telling what action was taken by the planning commission.
You're either not taking any motion? Well, I mean, if, by not taking any action, he has to just follow the rules, right?
He has to build a sidewalk, or he will have to come back and ask for a waiver again.
Right.
Yes.
Somebody could have not been here for myriad of reasons, but if they have an option, they could either choose a bill of assurance or just build a sidewalk.
Right.
If we give them, I'd rather give them the two options.
Go ahead, if you go ahead and pass that, the motion on the table.
If you pass the resolution with option four on it, those are the two options they have available. If they don't want either one of those, they, in theory, can come back and ask you again for the option to waive it or do payment in lieu of.
Did we get a second for Jim's motion? Okay, now we do.
And where, did you put a number of years in this one, too?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years.
Okay, anyone else need to comment? All right, Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
And we'll send that notification to the applicant that those are his options now. The next one again is a request for a waiver of sidewalks, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Rosa Tepia, in connection with 890 West Monitor Road, a single-family dwelling. Planning Commission looked at this one, and in this case, they recommend approval of this waiver request. It's a very narrow location on Monitor Street. There are some terrain issues and building at that location, and they're recommending approval of that one.
Will the resolution pass with option one?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone need to speak to this one? Okay.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
The next item is a resolution approving a conditional use for Chemac Enterprises Incorporated at 1728 East Robinson, is set forth in ordinance number 4030. This is for a tandem lot split. This is the location of the new Taco Bell going in. They're requesting to split the northern portion of the back part of this lot off into a separate lot, with the access easement being across the parking lot of Taco Bell. Planning Commission recommends approval of this ordinance, and I did read the title of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Area 6-0. The next item is an ordinance accepting the replat of Andrew Mark subdivision, a commercial subdivision, to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. And what this is, is a replat of tract two, which is taking one lot that's being divided into individual lots. Planning Commission has reviewed this replat and recommends approval, and I did read the title of the ordinance.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise, go ahead, Denise.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Second. Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry?
This one, along with the other two, have pending actions that are waiting, and that's why they have emergency clauses. The next item is a rezoning request for property owned by the Arkansas District of the Bible Missionary Church. It is a one-acre tract. They are requesting to rezone the property from MF12 to Institutional District P1, and the title of the ordinance needs a one put in that P dash, and it should have a one. An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from medium-density multifamily residential district MF12 to Institutional District P1, and declaring an emergency. Planning Commission recommends approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion in a second, anyone else? Call me up.
Is there a layman's description anywhere?
Let me see what the...
Thought we were...
It's 210 West County Line Road. There is a church there already. They're rezoning it to P1. They're requesting a large scale to put a parsonage on the, on the north side of the property. And with the P1 zoning district, it gives them different setbacks.
Can we not put layman's description? I thought we were trying to do that.
Ah, well, sometimes we do.
Okay, well, let's try again.
Even if we could, or even if we put it on the slide, that would help. I looked up at the slide.
Well, if you go back to that one, the address is on there, if you can read it.
Yeah, the address is, you just can't read the...
Yeah, if you got to read it, yeah, I can't read that small from here, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I will make a note, we'll try again.
All right. I think we're, we've got a motion and a second.
Yeah, the next one will be the same way.
So we need to vote. Is that what you're trying to tell me? Okay, let's vote.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Will the ordinance mercy clause carry 6-0?
Okay, the next request is for rezoning of property located at 4003 South Thompson. Doesn't say that on your packet, but that's, it's the property that's to the west of that, that fronts out on 71, because the frontage of that property is already zone C2. We're just rezoning the back portion of that to be C2 as well. As best I can understand, this is one of those areas where a strip was rezoned many years ago, when the zoning was first established, about 330 feet wide. Of everything down through there became commercial development, and there was no legal description done, and now we're going back and rezoning it at the property's request to include the entire piece of property. Planning Commission recommends approval of this. This is about 2.2 acres. If you remember, this is the old salvage yard that's been cleaned up over the years, and that's the piece of property we're talking about. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 to general commercial district C2, and declaring an emergency."
Will the... Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Anybody need to speak to this? Anybody in the audience?
Didn't they threaten to sue us over the liens that we placed on this property?
That's a city attorney question, that's not me.
You're right, they did.
Yes, actually, this case is still pending. It's been to the Court of Appeals, and it's been sent back, and it's still pending.
Well, so here's my question. If cases, if property's still in litigation, is it going to affect any possible damages by rezoning it?
In fact, rezoning this, I'll be honest with you, will go a long way towards possibly resolving this litigation. Actually, it would be the opposite.
Okay, good question. Anybody else?
The vicinity map shows that it would include what's labeled as 4003 607.
We went back and checked the legal description, made sure we had all of it, and it does not include those two lots. That's why this shows something different. And the legal description on your ordinance actually reflects that. So we had to, we've had a little bit of question over this, because the legal description's really complicated, and it doesn't, doesn't close well. It's got some highway right-of-way that came off of it, and it's been through several renditions, but those two lots were not included. They're separate ownership.
Separate?
Separate ownership.
So two lots on...
Those two lots that face out like to?
Black Oak?
Black Oak were never part of this piece of property.
So they shouldn't be in this, yeah?
Right, and they're not included in this, in the legal description that you have on the ordinance. Ernest will testify, we've been going over, back and forth over this for two weeks, yeah.
So 4003, is it the same property owner as what's being, okay, so there's access?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good. Anybody else? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Emergency clause pass?
Second.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Ordinance mercy clause carry 6-0?
Okay, item eight, Parks and Rec Committee reporting recommendations, Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor.
The first resolution being a resolution authorizing the sale of property to the Springdale School District. I guess we take them separate, Ernest, is that right?
Pass them separately.
This is basically us selling the youth center to the school district and in a minute, we're gonna purchase Next Level, I would assume.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Mayor, if you want to allude on more, you can.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
To approve eight A, which is the resolution of the sale of property, approving the sale of property to the Springdale School District. Any comments or questions on that?
Could I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Mayor, when I, I couldn't be at the meeting. Does this proposal include any equipment, any of the things that the youth center now owns that we could move to the new location?
We have presented a list of the equipment that we, that will not be included in the sale and, yeah.
Okay, so that has been.
That has been, that's attached as part of the, part of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
This would include the parking to the north, but not to the west?
Correct. Correct.
Will there be any like parking agreements on that for the?
We'll, we'll work out parking agreements on the, I, I can see a parking agreement work, a shared parking agreement working very well on the aquatic center parking when school's in session and, and the aquatic center's not open. Also, for the, on the city's side of that, the, the parking to the north of the youth center would be very beneficial for the city to have access to when school's not in session. So I think, I think we'll, we'll move forward with, with some proposed parking agreements to make that, make that work for everybody's, work to everybody's advantage. Any other questions? All right, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bulfer.
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Second resolution, like I said, is the second part of this. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of property located in nineteen oh six Cambridge, Springdale, Arkansas, Washington County. And the committee did recommend approval and it is the purchase of Next Level.
Will the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion of second. Are there any further questions or comments on this?
Pretty sure we've got some people in the audience that wanna talk about it. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we'll sure open it up to the audience if there's anyone that'd like to speak to this issue before the council votes. Yes, sir. Come right on up.
Good night. My name is Simeon Hinsey and you may have heard of The Playground.
Right.
We're the current, I guess, tenant of Next Level or which was formerly known as Next Level. And I was brought in about, I would say about six weeks ago by the current owners, just to kinda have a backseat of seeing what's going on in this building. Why has this thing not survived the previous two owners? And when you look at something from the outside in, it looks very beautiful. And you say, oh, there's so much potential. You walk through the doors, you say, man, this, this place has a lot of potential of bringing a lot of revenue, a lot of income and different things like that. One of the things I would, I would really caution you guys on, if you, if you go through with the purchase, is just making sure that the proper management and proper structure is in place for the facility. We have a great core and great group of individuals that's currently running the facility with Bubba Carpenter and Kendall Spencer with soccer and baseball and now with myself trying to get basketball and the things with volleyball going in the facility. And we would still love to be a part of that with whatever you guys decide to do moving forward. Over the past month, I had a meeting with Gary last week and just basically figuring out the numbers for the, for what we made last month. This is the first time that he has made a profit in the building over the last six weeks. And that's because we've all just pulled our forces together and actually been able to work together and make this thing happen. So there is a lot of potential in this facility. What we would like to see created is something, some kind of partnership between the city and ourselves. We're the ones that, that have been doing this. I mean, I have my doctorate in recreation and sport management, for goodness sakes. I don't know why I did it, but maybe this is the reason. But just, just to keep us involved with whatever you guys decide to do moving forward. We love this city. I've been in northwest Arkansas since nineteen ninety-five. I moved from the Bahamas. My boys go to school here. My wife is an assistant principal in the school district. So we love this community and for me, it's all about pouring into the kids and giving them access to change their lives. I was at First Baptist when, when that whole deal went through. I remember seeing you onstage singing your little heart out. So I, I know what that facility was originally meant for and I wanna see it get back to that. And that's, those doors being open to really pour into this community and bring light to the kids in this community. So we just love to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you, Simeon.
Have you had a conversation with, with the Parks and Rec Director at all?
With Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I spoke.
So you, so you've had the, you've begun the conversation?
Yeah, I spoke with Bill several weeks ago and didn't even know any of this was going on. And Bill said, well, you know, I don't have the money to buy the facility, but I like your ideas. This is where we're sitting.
We will, we'll keep those conversations going. We don't, we're not in a position to say right now.
Right.
One way or the other. We certainly need to take care of our, our parks and rec needs and the needs over the whole city. But we're certainly open to, as I've told some on the phone that I've talked to, we're, we're open to looking at, at whatever. And we certainly, if there's a, if there's a good fit, then we'll, we'll work hard to, with you to make it work.
We appreciate that. Just keep us in mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Yes?
Yes, just to kinda second what Simeon said. My name's Bubba Carpenter. I've been in Next Level for three years now, operating, I run a baseball softball academy. I know a few of you guys. I'm a northwest Arkansas guy. I've been around here my whole life. I was fortunate enough to go off and play baseball. Went to University of Arkansas, had a chance to go play after that. I've been in northwest Arkansas ever since and I've trained kids. I've had a facility in Springdale since for probably fifteen years now. I started a little place off of Kwood Lane, moved over behind Matthias and then we outgrew it and we moved into Next Level. We've benefited a ton of kids through sports and we teach what we call lifelong lessons through the game of baseball and softball. It's more than just training kids in baseball, it's about life lessons. We've sent tons of kids off to college through our organization, our facility, and that's what it's all about. You know, I can't speak for those guys. We don't get rich doing what we do. We do it 'cause we love it. And a big portion of, of my business in, in the Next Level is Springdale families. You know, I spoke with Mike earlier and I've, I've also spoken with Bill. A huge, probably seventy-five percent of my business is Springdale parents and I've gotten a ton of phone calls and texts. Everyone scared to death what's gonna happen to us inside that facility. And I get it, you know, we've gotta take care of the rec leagues and, and all that. I understand that there's more sports than just, you know, basketball, baseball, softball and soccer. But, you know, we're good at what we do and we, we wanna help you guys do it better. I don't know, I've spoken with Bill a couple of times on the phone and I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to overstep my boundaries here, but I'm saying, I'm really good at what I do. I'm good at managing buildings and I'm, I'm good with kids. I'm good at getting them to the next level and, and not just in sports, just in life itself. And, and, and I know they're good at it as well. And so I wanna second what Simeon said. We just want an opportunity to try to work with you guys, work with Bill and work with everybody else involved and make this something that's huge in Springdale. It, it can be a positive for the city, you know, and everyone can benefit from it, I think, all the kids. And I think ultimately, we're in it for the kids. And so, I mean, I, I just see it as a, as a, as a blessing that this is happening. You know, when I first started hearing about it, you know, my parents were calling me, it was gloom and doom and I'm like, and I've got a good feeling about it because I really think it's gonna be something that's good for this city. I think we can build the whole, the whole sports up in, in all of Springdale with, with every sport. And so, you know, I just wanted to second what Simeon said and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Sorry to get so, so long-winded.
Hey, no worries about that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank, and, and thank y'all for what you do for the kids in our community. We appreciate that and, and we'll, we'll see where this goes. We're, but we're, we're certainly open to talk and see what possibilities there are. All right? Good deal. All right. We still need to vote, don't we? We hadn't bought it yet. We got a motion of second. Are there any other comments? Okay, Denise?
Evans. Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just to reiterate.
Yeah.
We talked about this at the committee meeting. The, the money that's gonna be the shortfall on this deal will come out of the bond program, correct?
Right, we have a one point nine million dollar gap between the sale of the rec center and the purchase of Next Level. And that one point nine will come out of our park bond money. Okay? Good. All right, item nine, Health Sanitation Property Maintenance Committee reporting recommendations. Chairman's Jim Reed. Jim, have you and Ernest talked today?
I have not.
Okay.
You probably saw the email, Tom Evers sent an email today that they have received their permits.
They have?
Have received all the permits that you all asked them to do between the last time this was on the agenda and tonight. So I think Tom was just recommending that this be, election be taken and if they don't fulfill what they've, that they're gonna do in the permit, then we'll bring it back.
Permit, start another clock, right? So.
Okay, could we talk then again about, you know, three or six months from now? What we do is do this and then we forget. It's not that staff forgets, but that we forget and then somehow it falls to the cracks. So is it possible, now that they are successfully moving forward, that there's six months from now, a review of where they are in the process? Because this has been going on for a long time.
We can get a, an update, an update in six months.
Is that a fair thing to ask?
I think there won't be any, necessarily any action for the council to take at that point, but we can sure get an update. Right? Thank you, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
That good?
Okay, thank you.
Let's put Jim Reed in charge of reminding us.
He's retiring, he gets to go play.
That's right. He'll call us from his trailer in south Texas. Yeah. Mike, will you go ahead and make a note on the calendar so you, and, and remind us to get that on the agenda for an update? Okay, thank you.
So in that case, are we willing to take no action in tonight?
I guess we just don't do anything.
Don't do anything.
Yeah, if there's no motion, they, they've pretty much fulfilled what was asked. Of course, Cassie wasn't at the last meeting, but, but they've fulfilled what, what we asked them to do.
That's good.
Good, okay. And we'll, and we'll keep an eye on it and get an update.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Item ten, Rick Culver, our, the Chair of Police and Fire Committee is not here tonight. Who would like to take that or anybody wanna take that? I will, if nobody wants to.
I'll do it if you want me to.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
All right, Fire and Police met last week. We've got two resolutions. First, resolution authorizing the execution of purchase contract for fire department equipment. And all, it was recommended for approval and I'll turn it over to Chief Irwin.
Trying to get there, sorry.
Good.
Will the resolution pass?
Okay, we do have a motion of second for approval. Chief, for the benefit of everybody else, well, go ahead and tell us what we're, what we're looking at here.
Basically, what this is, is a duplicate order on the brush truck that we received last, well, this year, actually. We're just ordering another one and it's through the H T A C buy board. So it's been vetted and basically bid, so.
And this was a piece of equipment that we identified as part of our bond project?
Correct.
Yeah. Fire bond, okay? We do have a motion of second. Any further questions for the chief? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Reed.
Carries six zero.
Second item, when we met last week, was a resolution authorizing the execution of contract for architect services. And I believe, if I remember, serves me correct, that was for construction of Fire Station Eight.
That's correct.
Right.
Will that resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions on this one? All right, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Bulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item eleven, Finance Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Know what page that's on? Uh, architects, what is it?
Looks like one twenty-one. Is that right? Yes.
Okay. Finance Committee met that same night and there was discussion about the purchase of point seven seven acres for, over here on Huntsville Avenue from, for the property. It used to be Triple T Foods, it used to be the old ice plant for purposes needed for a new parking. And the resolution, and the resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. And the title of the resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of approximately zero point seven seven acres located at three oh one East Huntsville Avenue."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Bulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes. That same night, Finance Committee met in a full-packed room in this council room to discuss the approving of the, the two thousand and nineteen budget. And resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. I'm gonna read the title to the resolution. I'd, I'd like to have some discussion before taking motion if possible. The title of the resolution is, "A resolution approving the city of Springdale, Arkansas budget for the year two thousand and nineteen." I had a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. If we could do that before we take a motion, Mayor?
Sure, sure.
I wanted to make sure that I was correct on Fire Department, for one thing. Because at that same meeting, we talked about the requests that the Fire Department had for new employees.
Chief, you wanna come on up? Yeah, that, you know, are you talking about the timing of the hires? Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it, and there was, we were gonna talk about six new employees, correct?
Correct.
And, and that kinda came up at the end of all that discussion. We had a long discussion and we said that we'd, we'd go ahead and pass the budget as it is now and bring that up after the first of the year to see, to discuss the need and the timing and all that for those six employees, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that, like on page sixty-seven of the budget, you probably don't have it in front of you, but what that is, is on every department, there's a staffing page that shows how many employees we have from year to year.
Yes, sir.
And so from year two thousand and eighteen, it was on this page sixty-seven, it shows a hundred and twenty-six. And then on two thousand and nineteen, it shows a hundred and thirty-two. So that's the six employees that we're gonna talk about in January?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that that six employees is not in the budget that we're getting ready to pass, correct?
I believe that's correct. They are in July.
They are, but not for the whole year. They are, they're, they're in there for half a year to hire in July.
Okay.
The, the discussion was whether or not we wanted to hire them earlier to get them ready.
Correct.
When the station's open.
Okay, so if we pass the budget as, as presented, we're hiring those six new employees now?
No.
As presented, you'd be hiring them in July.
As presented, we'd be hiring them in July, July one.
They're budgeted for half the year.
Starting in July.
Correct.
Okay.
That's where we would wanna come back after the first of the year and y'all look at whether you wanna move that up to March.
Right, because if we hire them July, they won't be ready till the end of the year.
So we're talking about another three months.
Okay. And so then with that, I wanted to bring up, because of the tightness of our budget and because of the need that we had to change the percentage of paying for raises out of what had previously been C I P money, a change of that percentage, as well as taking money from reserves. I wanted to at least have some discussion, because it had very little discussion after we started talking about the raises, as to whether or not it's that we should go ahead with all hires, not just year six, which I understand now won't actually start till July anyway, which is probably the best thing anyway. But I'm wondering about all new hires, which basically amounts to, one, for the building department, that you and the building department had had a conversation with.
Correct.
Whether or not we ought to take another look at that after the first of the year, as well as the Parks Department. And just hold off on any new hires until after the first of the year, take another look at the need, timing and ability to pay. After the first year. Everybody totally opposed to that?
Wyman's wanting something to say.
Okay.
To do so, you just need to include that in your motion to adopt the budget.
Well, and I'm not ready to make a motion. I wanted to see if we could have some conversation about it first.
Right.
When it has any strong reason not to do that tonight.
With the normal hiring process would take some time anyway, so I don't think it would hurt any of the departments.
I don't think it would impact any, any hiring.
No.
If y'all wanted to talk about it again. Cause I, I do hope we'll talk more about the Fire Department and, and trying to move that up if we can, so that we can have them ready.
All of them at the same time? Would that be through personnel or through the budget? Or both, I guess, it doesn't matter.
Well, you're doing it because of budget, so I'd say finance.
Finance, yeah.
So, again.
I think if we looked at it together like you're talking about, Jeff, it's kinda like last year, we brought capital back. We kinda held capital out and all year, we kinda got hit with capital stuff. And I think if we know going in, if sometime after the first of the year, we sit down and, what's our new hires and let's talk and look and discuss.
And part of the reason I bring that up is because, you know, we kinda flew through the departments ahead of time and then we came back and dealt with the raises and, and how to pay for the raises. And we really didn't have time to look at it all up, kind of as a big picture.
How would, how would it be, just a suggestion, and I think this is what your suggestion anyway? If we, if first committee meeting in January, second committee meeting in January, tho, those departments that have, that have asked for new hires and have been approved of new hires, come in and just give you the timing about what, what they need and when they need it?
Yeah, and I think there's only three departments, right? Building Department, Fire Department and Parks Department.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do. So I wanna move, well, how do I, how would I amend the, the budget, Ernest, before we've read the resolution?
I think you could move the resolution be adopted.
With that amendment?
Those positions.
New positions.
Okay.
Parks Department, one in building. The six for Fire Department, you've already got it for July in there, right?
Yeah, yeah, there really wouldn't be any change on the Fire Department, I don't think.
Yeah.
The Parks Department and one for building.
Could, do they need to be taken out? Do they need to be not hired until further discussion or how, how would?
Hire, not let them hire until after week.
Would it be better to do that, Wyman, or to take them out and then put them back in later as we?
No, I, I think if you just, part of the motion to adopt the budget, that the new positions authorizing the budget not be hired until the council gives permission to fill those positions later in the year.
So it really wouldn't be amending the budget.
Right.
It really wouldn't be changing the budget.
It'd be holding off on, kind of a freeze on the hiring until we've had discussion.
Hiring of new positions.
Probably what you're trying to say, Jeff, is temporarily a hiring freeze until this is. Well, I know it's kinda a strong statement, but.
I wanna be careful here, cause I, I wanna be clear, we're talking about new positions.
Exactly, oh, yes, 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 new positions.
Not a hiring freeze, yeah.
No, no, I, no, no, so that's why.
Before I make the resolution, I have one other thing and, and I want, I'm not sure that we recognize the significance, the importance, the value of the Johansson study. And I'm not sure I feel comfortable funding that until we have a better explanation of why we need to pay for a Johansson, to continue to pay for Johansson.
You're talking about?
For two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, okay.
Four thousand dollars, it's not a lot, but I don't even know what that's for.
That's, that's when, what, what is that, Wyman, besides, I know, or Gina, I know getting positions evaluated, rated, yeah. What all, what all does that annual agreement get us?
That's the system that we use for our job descriptions, to create job descriptions, to rate the job descriptions. It's basically our job description software.
All right. I, either, I'd like to either pull it out. All right. I, I, either, I'd like to either pull it out and do it later, or if we leave it there. I know it's just four thousand dollars, but I sure would like to have someone come and explain to us why we need that and what, what we get out of it. So, what do y'all want to do?
That's a fair question to ask.
But just leave it in there and ask, or do you want to take it out?
Handle it kind of the same way, and have Johansson come in and...
Yeah, and make a proposal.
Talk with the committee about, about what that gets us every year? You want to do that?
All right. So...
I don't know when we pay that, anyway. Is it, is it, is it prorated, or is it a one lump sum that we pay?
When do we pay our annual fee to Johansson?
I believe it's annually.
Just a lump sum?
Just a lump sum.
Okay, well, let's just don't pay it until we, until we have the discussion with Johansson.
All right.
Okay.
So, I would, and I'm not even going to put that part in the motion, but so the motion is, uh, well, the resolution, I already read the title, didn't I? The motion is to, um, adopt the resolution approving the city budget for two thousand nineteen with the understanding, or how else am I going to word that, Ernest? The understanding that the new hires would not be hired until after...
Yeah, no, no new positions filled until after, until approval of council, or approval of committee.
No new positions to the Building Department, Fire Department, well, not even Fire Department, Building Department or Parks Department.
Yeah.
Till after we've had a... Not a very good motion, but there it is.
Second. She'll write it up. We know what you mean.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. We did get a second? All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And now, we will turn it over to our city attorney, Ernest, for item twelve.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to follow cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. Properties located at three oh seven South Cleveland, six oh two South Cleveland, and eighteen ten Wheatland. The other one listed in your packet was removed because it was paid in full.
Make a motion. Ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Uh, anyone in the audience need to speak to any of these properties that we're taking action on? Okay, seeing none. I'll ask for the vote.
Evans. Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Watson. Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry six zero.
All right. Any comments from department heads? Council members?
Yes. I'd just like to, I think this is Mr. Reed and Mr. Culver's last meeting.
Yes.
They've been unbelievably, uh, hardworking council people, and, uh, I think we owe them a great deal to say thank you.
Right.
For the time you've served this city and all you've done. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you, Kathy. Thanks, guys.
I would also just like to, to thank the citizens of Springdale and this council for the twelve years that they've allowed me to serve on this council, and continue for best wishes for the city of Springdale.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, any comments from our city attorney?
House, sir.
Uh, I only have one. Uh, it's Mr. Watson's birthday, so we all wish, uh, Jeff a happy birthday. He caught me today, so, uh, I'm, I'm feeling better. I'm not older than him anymore. And, uh, so, uh, I, I, please notice the, uh...
We need to take action on the meeting?
Yeah, do we need to take action on these? You see the, uh, the suggestions there, three bullets, and, uh, changes the committee meeting, or, or the next committee meeting will be, so basically, we eliminate the second committee meeting in December. We eliminate the second council meeting in December, and, uh, that's the gist of what it would do. Yeah, now that does put... That puts, let, let's see, when did we put the committee?
January seventh, Tuesday.
Right, so that's, that makes it the night before the first council meeting. So, I